Good afternoon and welcome to this hearing of the House Committee on Higher Education and Technology. It is Wednesday, March 23rd, 2:00 PM, and we are in State Capitol Conference Room 309. We have our 2:00 PM agenda ahead of us. Just a reminder to members of the committee that we will hear testimony on the first bill, SB 3229, and immediately after the testimony, we will take a vote because this evening is a deadline for getting bills to their final committee. So without further ado, SB 3229 relates to geothermal royalties and first testifier we have is, let's see, from the University of Hawaii, Vasilis Sermos.
Good afternoon, Chair. We are in support of this bill. We would like to actually request a couple of, we think, non-substantive changes from our chief financial officer. We would prefer not to establish more special funds within the university if the bill can read to deposit the process in the Innovation and Commercialization Special Fund, which the legislature established in 2017 that would be easier for us to handle. And then we would like to put in the bill the official organized research unit under the School of Ocean Earth Science and Technology as the executor of these funds for geothermal exploration, which is the Hawaii Institute of Geology and Planetology. Other than those comments, we are in strong support of the bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have from Department of Land and Natural Resources, Russell Suji.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Russell Suji for the department and together with me this afternoon is Ian Hirakawa. We submitted testimony strongly opposing this bill. If you read carefully the formula that is used, it would end up resulting in the department who is tasked with the regulatory oversight as well as the leasing for these mineral rights to end up possibly with receiving no revenue. Currently, we have just, we, our engineering office that has regulatory staff for geothermal onboard are funded 100% out of the revenues that we generate from the land fund, which in particular receives the income from the geothermal resource as well as the land leasing staff that we have on our side. So we asked that this, we are asking for an amendment to the bill to move forward because the department is also in favor, you know, is not opposed to geothermal development or exploration. The problem is the funding issue and we're asking this for, this committee to consider an amendment. I am here for, to answer any questions as well as Ian Hirakawa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we also have from the DLNR, James Kurata.
Oh, he's, he's with us, sir.
He's with you. Okay, all, all of the DLNR.
All of the DLNR.
Together, okay. Let's see, we have written comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. We have Hawaii State Energy Office offering written comments and testimony and support from Sustainable Energy Hawaii, Richard Ha, as well as two individuals. Anyone I missed wishing to testify in this bill? Seeing none, members, any questions for our testifiers? Seeing none, question for Mr. Suji. Mr. Suji, in your testimony, I see written, you have the amount in FY21 of your share of royalties being spent at $922,427,000.
Is that correct? No, I think, I believe that's the expenses of just the engineering office. I believe the royalties was, Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm reading the chart as 232,000 roughly in royalties with, with expenses just on the engineering staff, mind you, that's just the regulatory staff, not including the leasing staff and the billing and all that other stuff and accounting. It's just the leasing staff. Ian, are you on board?
Yes, I, I think actually the 232,000 was the full amount of royalties and I, it looks like our share was.
Our share was even half of that.
Yeah, it was half, 116,352.
I see what you're saying. Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you. And for the University of Hawaii, Vice President Sermos, just wanted to clarify that you're suggesting that the money deposited, if there is any money, to be deposited instead of the special fund that cited in the bill, you're suggesting the Innovation and Commercialization Special Fund?
Yes, Chair, we would like not to create another special fund under the university.
And you're saying this is an existing fund?
This is an existing fund and we are required to report on that fund, I think, once every two years. So we would prefer that.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, we'll recess for decision making. In members on this bill, HB, SB 3229, I'm going to suggest we move forward with a couple amendments. Specifically, as far as the distribution of royalties from geothermal is concerned, like to keep the county share at the 30% or $600,000, whichever is less. Suggest putting in the state share through DLNR as an amount up to $1 million. And the excess would go to the UH Innovation and Commercialization Initiative Special Fund to be used by the Hawaii Institute of Geophysics and Planetology to further the discovery and development of geothermal resources. Finally, we would add the UH to current agencies that are required to report annually on their use of these royalties. So, members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair, would you please take the vote?
Now voting on SB 3229, SB 2, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair votes aye. Representative Bellotti.
Aye.
Representative Castalis.
Aye.
Representative Gannon.
Aye.
Representative Gates.
Aye.
Representative Hashimoto.
Aye.
Representative Capella.
Aye.
Representative Ono, excuse, Representative Quinlan.
Aye.
Representative Woodson, excused. Representative Yamani, excused. Representative Okimoro. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
All right. Thank you, members, for your indulgence. We'll now move on to the three resolutions on our agenda and we'll take up, if there's no complaint about the, we'll take up the HCR and the HR version of each resolution at the same time as far as testimony is concerned. So first up, we have, let's see, HCR 37 requesting the UH to establish a reliable, independent and transparent methodology to assess effects of radio frequency trends, emissions generated by wireless antenna sites. And let's see, first up, we have Matt Matsonaga.
Shalak Itu. Good afternoon, Chair Takayama, Vice Chair Clark and members of the committee. I submitted written testimony and I stand on that written testimony with the caveat that my client Drew Fountain and I, we've met with quite a few stakeholders on this subject. And I've compiled the most commonly asked questions in a Q and A format that is part of my testimony. So in short, the questions are dealing with, hey, shouldn't this be preempted by the federal government? And the short answer is no, that merely seeking compliance with FCC regulations is not determined to be preemption. And number two, would this be somehow duplication of efforts that if the FCC is supposed to be monitoring these RF or radio frequency radiation emissions, why should we be concerned with it? Well, because they just don't have the staff or the resources to do so. And wouldn't it be a shame if we left something up to the federal government and it resulted in significant human harm and safety? I think we've seen incidents of that in the past. The dangers of simply deferring to the FCC or the feds are quite a bit, that you're looking at primarily workers that may not know that they're put in harms way. Talking about roofers, we're talking about painters, we're talking about firefighters, talking about window washers, masons. There's a whole host of workers that may not know that they're putting themselves potentially at harm. And, and when my client Drew speaks, perhaps he can share his own personal story about how he unintentionally put himself in harms way. And the costs with respect to this study and report would be something that the stakeholders in the university would collaborate on and figure out how to determine how to get the resources necessary, whether it's through federal grants or federal monies or somehow come up with a, with a resource. So with that, I'm happy to respond to any questions when you're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Safe Dynamics Incorporated.
Aloha. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. The Honorable House Representatives, Higher Education Technology Committee and Honorable Representative Takayama. I think in about two minutes, I can kind of get, get a brief summary of what this is. Though I think the legislation has purpose and value. I, I really think it's, it's well done and you'll see how this plays out in just a second. But Representative Takayama asked a question yesterday, something along the lines of what other states are doing this? The technology to solve this problem has not been available till most recently. In fact, we started a program on the Manoa campus in 2019. It's 95% complete. We're just waiting for a little bit of information from the carriers to actually have a demonstration model of what the framework of what this legislation is. So it's really good. It also would provide an opportunity to involve all the stakeholders, the carriers, the CTIA, the building owners, the insurers, labor, and again, all the stakeholders to participate and analyze the effectiveness of this protocol and the framework that's in there. This is probably an issue that very few of you are aware of. This has to do with RF radiation exposure at wireless sites. It gained notoriety in 2013 when the rating agency for the insurance industry estimated 250,000 workers were getting in these RF exposure areas and being overexposed. And the problem with the, the dangers with RF radiation is it's invisible. You and I are fine. Our, the, those wireless carriers do a magnificent job developing technology that makes our lives wonderful. And also, we're very safe once we're away from the antennas because the power dissipates exponentially at distance. But anywhere within, say, 40 feet of the face of an antenna can be in a hazard area. And that's the area that workers just aren't aware of. And because of that issue, the global insurers pulled out of the RF exposure market. Today, you cannot buy RF exposure insurance, which leaves building owners, municipalities, you know, without insurance. I think there's testimony on that from a.
Mr. Hill, I'm going to ask you to try and summarize your testimony.
Yes. So that the, being able to do the demonstration site at the university, there was also talk of doing all the higher public education universities were a little more robust. And then also having an RF training seminar coordinated through the IBW who just called and said they would do that. And by the way, the IBW does support this testimony. Council, my, my council just heard that. And along with Hiash would be good, but also a 5G research component at the university. So we're actually meeting with the Dean of Engineering, Electrical Engineering next, next Wednesday on this. So there's a lot of support. There's a lot of companies that are verified compliance. And this is a, this would be a wonderful collaborative effort. This is actually being started by a carrier in another country. They're paying for it out of their pocket. This is being discussed. I think I mentioned 150 nations are discussing this next week at the World Government Summit, but that's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Hawaii Association of Broadcasters, Chris Leonard.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Takayama and Vice Chair Clark and members of the committee. My name is Chris Leonard. I'm the President of the Hawaii Association of Broadcasters, a trade association that represents a little over 100 radio and television stations across the state. I also am the President and General Manager of a broadcast group on the Big Island, operates six radio stations in Hilo and Kona. We share your concern obviously as it pertains to public safety and RF exposure. The first few sentences of this resolution seem to be targeted primarily at 5G. However, the broad language in the bill sort of lumps, I think, all RF emitting transmitters into this group, the way that it is written. If the intent is to address 5G proliferation, which are in more urban areas and closer to residences, that's fine. And we don't have an issue with that as it exists for our radio and television broadcasters. However, this would provide an added layer of compliance potentially to be held to. And we're already held accountable by the FCC. In this particular case, we have very specific RF plans in place, signage in place. Most of our sites are remote fenced sites with RF exposure guidelines. So we're a little bit concerned about some unintended consequences of this perhaps, although we wouldn't be opposed based on the first few testifiers that I've heard and being a participant in the discussion to make sure that we ensure the safety for our workers and the general public, but wanted some clarification as to the direct intent of this bill, if it's focused exclusively on 5G or is it on all wireless as it exists? Because radio and television stations have existed in our communities, radio in the, in the case of my oldest AM since 1936. And we have compliance practices in place that keep us safe, keep our employees safe, keep our community safe. And we, as I said, have concerns that, that the way this is written, it's a little bit more broad than I think is intended and wanted to be able to address that and would be available to answer any questions that you may have as they pertain to broadcast.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we have written statements from the Mexican Telecommunications Advisory Board offering comments, CTIA in opposition, Beneventura Partners in support, Richard Egan individual in support. And I believe that's it. Anyone I missed wishing to testify on this bill? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to HCR 118 and HR 118. And let's see, this urges the PUC to develop and adopt an efficient streamlined process for reviewing electrical utilities requests to provide middle mile broadband services. And we have from the PUC a statement offering comments, Dean Nishina, BCCA.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair Takayama, Vice Chair Clark, members of the committee. I'm Dean Nishina with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. I believe you have our written testimony supporting the intent, but offering comments. I'll stand on my written testimony, but I am available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Charter Communications, Rebecca Lieberman.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and member of the committee. My name is Rebecca Lieberman, Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications. We stand on our written testimony providing comments and are available with questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric, Christian Whitney.
Good afternoon, Christian Whitney with Hawaiian Electric. We also stand on our written testimony in support. I just want to also say we have reviewed some of the comments from the commission. I just want to also say we have reviewed some of the comments from the Commission and the Consumer Advocate, and we understand their positions and we support some of the suggestions offered by the C. A. and their testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaiian Telcom, Janine Sukie.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to offer comments on behalf of Hawaiian Telcom. We'll stand on our comments. We have requested suggested amendments, which would do a couple things and will, will be available for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that's all the testifiers we have, unless I missed anyone. I don't believe I have, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the final measure. The final resolution is H. C. R. 165, H. R. 165, requesting the Office of Enterprise Technology Services to develop a recommended definition for blockchain technology and recommendations for opportunities and individuals or individuals, entities, and state agencies to use blockchain technology. And let's see, we have Office of Enterprise Technology Services.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. We have recommended our testimony. We do support the bill, but we're recommending you also look at S. C. R. 31, which creates a task force under the D. B. Department. This is something we certainly can do, but it's a little bit out of our normal area of responsibility to look at what businesses could do with blockchain. Our area of responsibility is generally limited to supporting the executive branch of government. So thank you for your time, and I'm available to ask questions.
Thank you. Members, any questions? I believe that's all the testifiers we have in this. So seeing none, let's recess. Reconvene for decision making on our resolutions. First up, H. C. R. 37 requesting a study by U. H. I'd like to move this on. We're the first committee, and it still goes to C. P. C. And I'd like to suggest we delete the fourth paragraph, the fourth whereas, because that seems to have raised concerns on a part of them, some testifiers, because it called into, or at least raised the issue of safety, including, and I also like to make some technical non-substantive amendments. So, members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair, would you take the vote?
Now voting on H. C. R. 37 slash H. R. 32. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the absence of Representative Ono Woodson and Quinlan for the remainder of the hearing. Are there any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? With all other members voting aye, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. This next resolution is H. C. R. 118. Going to suggest that we move this on, taking into consideration some changes offered by testifiers to remove references to possibly reduce consumer costs because of the fact that this is actually covered by the P. U. C. And also add language to the be it resolved clause, recognizing that the emphasis should be on expanding broadband to unserved and underserved areas. Finally, other changes for style and technical corrections. Members, any questions or comments or concerns? If not, Vice Chair, would you take a vote?
Now voting on H. C. R. 118 and H. R. 118. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any members voting with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Final resolution is H. C. R. 165, H. R. 165. My suggestion is move this forward as it's, questions, comments, concerns, seeing none, Vice Chair?
I'm voting on H. C. R. 165 and H. R. 165. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. I would like to note the presence of Representative Yamani. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Representative Capella, thank you. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members, for adjourned.